I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cellphones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings will broadcast on television on Comcast Channel 99 and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. I'd like to also welcome our special guests. We have about thirty-five seniors from Gaston City High School who are here participating in Youth in Government Day. We seem to have lost some of them. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Tolls?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask David Lawson to bring the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we're thankful that you've allowed us to see another day. We thank you for the beauty in today. We ask that our minds, our hearts, our motives, intentions, and our actions be pleasing in your sight as our elected officials gather to put forth what is for the best of the citizens of Gaston. And as we do recognize our Student Government Day and we face another graduation, we ask that you continue to put your hands of safety and protection around our youth. We ask that they may be able to seek higher heights as they continue into the next journey of their education and their vocation. We're thankful for the representation of each family within these students. And we ask that all of the citizens and all of our officials uplift them and continue to wish them and provide them with the best resources necessary as they become fruitful citizens, not just of this city, of this state, but of this nation. We will be ever grateful, thankful, and happy to give you the praise. In the name of your son, Jesus, we ask these things. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on April fourteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of April tenth through the sixteenth.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts for the week.
Proclamations, Mayor? Do we have any?
Yes, we have one. Is Christie King, are you here? Okay, she's not to accept this, but I do have one. Whereas the most meaningful gift that a human being can bestow upon another is the gift of life. Approximately twenty-three thousand seven hundred and fifteen candidates on the nation's organ transplant waiting list received a life-saving or life-enhancing organ transplant in 2014. Of those, four hundred and one received an organ transplant in Alabama. A new patient is added to the national waiting list for an organ transplant every twenty-one minutes. More than a hundred and twenty-three thousand two hundred and thirteen men, women, and children are currently on the national waiting list for organ transplantations, of which approximately three thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven reside in Alabama. Six thousand and forty-three on the national waiting list died waiting for an organ transplant, which did not come in time. Of those, two hundred and twenty-one were on Alabama's waiting list. The Alabama Organ Center is a nonprofit, independent, organ recovery organization dedicated to the recovery of high-quality organs and tissues for transplantation therapy. Gaston, Alabama supports the Alabama Organ Center's life-saving mission. Therefore, I Shurm and Gait, Mayor of the City of Gaston, do hereby proclaim April 2015 is Donate Life Month. In Gaston, Alabama, we honor all those who have given the gift of life. We focus our efforts on the extreme need for organ and tissue donors, and we encourage residents to designate their donation decision and share the decision to donate with family members. Thank you.
Item number eight A under Unfinished Business is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 101 Hillside Circle in District One, Garden Villas LLC being the last known owner. This resolution was tabled on February seventeenth for sixty days. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we table it for thirty days.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for thirty days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for thirty days.
Item number nine, at this time, and I'm sorry, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of resolutions ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 209 Mary Street in District Two. Rodrick R. Lloyd, Wachovia, and MERS being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Sir, if you would, state your name and address.
My name is Rodrick Lloyd, and I was getting ready to start rebuilding the house. And I came today to get a building permit, and the lady told me I need to be here at eleven.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
I did talk with Mr. Lloyd prior to the meeting, my first conversation with him. He did not disclose this, but I believe your insurance is settled, right? And so he does, you know, he does wish and desire to obtain necessary permits to repair. This is a burned house in East Gaston, and I certainly don't have a problem with giving him an opportunity to do that. This case only started in January, so with this being my first communication with him today, on his behalf, I would ask that this case be tabled for thirty days. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Okay. What is the pleasure of the council?
Yours.
It's mine.
I move that we table it for thirty days.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion to table and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for thirty days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for thirty days.
I would ask that Mr. Lloyd, please be sure to get with Mr. Harbison and the Building Department and stay in contact with them relative to your plans, and they'll support you through that process. So, and we appreciate you coming forward. Number ten is a resolution authorizing agreement with Gaston Junior Golf Association. This is to sponsor the association's event from March through August of 2015, and the amount is thirty-five hundred dollars. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So, second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number eleven is a resolution authorizing agreement with Rapid Scan. This is for maintenance and repair services of the security equipment located at the Municipal Court and Police Precinct in East Gaston. The amount is forty-two hundred dollars for the period of June one, 2015, through May thirty-first, 2016. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number twelve is an ordinance amending fiscal year, amending the fiscal year 2015 general fund budget. This is for unexpected funds, unexpended, I apologize, for unexpended funds from fiscal years 2013 and 2014 to be used for the countrywide, the countywide sirens maintenance program and other expenses incurred by EMA, and the amount is sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Okay? Item number thirteen, obviously, again, for first reading, is an ordinance amending fiscal year 2015 budget. This is to reflect receipt and appropriation of additional emergency solutions grant funds in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, which shall be divided equally between the Salvation Army and thirteenth place. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Okay, is there any new business?
Yes, I have two items, and I'll do them separately. The first one has to do with the, and I ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to consider today and a second, clerk?
Which item?
Yeah, which item?
Oh, I was about, I was about. It's an item authorizing the agreement with Comcast for the installation of Internet services to be located at 2010 Locust Street.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous vote for consideration.
I move for the adoption.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
This is an Internet service up in pre-council. It was discussed that it's for FEMA, they will be having a public meeting, and there's a need for Internet service in that, in this particular building, so we are agreeing to have the installation done for one thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty cents.
Is Jeremy still here? Okay, would you like to come up and speak about this?
The meeting that we're having is they're redoing the FIRM maps, which is the federal insurance rate maps for Etowah County, and we are supplying a public meeting to allow our citizens who are coming into the new flood zone to have a chance to look at the map, speak with FEMA about insurance, ways to appeal during this process. And to be able to do that in a timely manner, because we have a ninety-day period, we needed it to be in this window, and this was the only building that was open. And so, since we couldn't make a Wi-Fi or anything else work in the building, we were having to hardwire it, and to get it in and get the ability to give them the Internet access that they need. Our city alone sent out three hundred and sixty invitations to this meeting, and we'll have a little over four hundred properties that will come into the new flood zone. And so it gives them a chance to meet with FEMA and really understand what's going on in that process.
Now, the new maps are etched in stone, right? There's no...
Not yet.
They're not?
We have the ninety-day appeal period that we're in now. There will then be a ninety-day period that FEMA will respond to any appeals, and then there will be what's called a letter of final determination that is issued. When that letter of final determination is issued, then they are etched in stone. And then there is a grace period in between the final determination and the effective date for people to get insurance. And then once the effective date hits, they're required to have insurance for the flood.
Okay.
The dates are April twenty-eighth from two to seven, and April twenty-ninth from eight to twelve in the morning. That way, we tried to give two different days at two different times so that people who worked different schedules could make it. But it is for the people who are coming into the flood zone. Now, we do have almost seven hundred properties coming out of the flood zone, but we'll notify them separately. This meeting is only for those coming into the flood zone.
Okay, there's some, there's some important properties to the city that are actually coming out.
Yes, most of the properties that are coming out are along the river, and they're equating that to Alabama Power, providing much better data, and they're also controlling the flood levels better, and so they're able to lower those. A lot of properties are coming out, and a lot of them, the flood elevation is lowering, so it really helps along the river.
Is this just for citizens of Gaston, or is it countywide or statewide or what?
The county and the city of Etala are joining in with us on the meeting. The other cities were not, didn't feel they were affected enough to participate, but there will be Etala, us, and Etowah County doing the rural areas at this meeting.
All right, thanks, Jer. You've already voted on this end.
We have not.
We have not voted. Okay, is there any more discussion? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, is there any more new business?
Yes, I have another item that I'd like to have unanimous consent for adoption today, and this is a, an agreement leasing the Kmart parking area for Spring Carnival that will come up prior to June thirtieth.
Second.
I move for adoption.
Second. Do we have a motion and a second for consideration today?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. A resolution authorizing a denim to agreement with Tyler Technologies for the software to be used at the Municipal Court and Police Precinct, asking for unanimous consent to consider it today.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Subsequent.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent for it's a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property on East Broad Street and East Chestnut Street.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt, please.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
This is a long overdue piece of property that we've been trying to buy. I guess we've been trying to buy it for about a year or so now, and I'm just glad it's finally coming to pass. We need that property. We've been trying to get it for a long time now. Finish it with...
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I have one more, Mr. President. I'd ask for unanimous consent, please. It's authorizing the TIF funds for the acquisition of property located on East Broad and East Chestnut Street, the one we just passed. This I'm gonna pay with, with TIF funds.
Okay, second. Do we have a motion and a second? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
I move to adopt, please, in this piece of property.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards. Remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor, would you like to get us started?
We appreciate all of you being here. This has been a really more inquisitive group, I think, than we've had before, in sort of asking questions and getting involved, and that's good. That's, the more you ask, the more you find out. But I would like to ask you, how many of you have brothers, sisters, nieces, nephews, or neighbors with smaller kids, maybe third, fourth, fifth grade? Hold your hand up, please. All right. One of the main problems we're having in the elementary schools is kids are not learning enough about math and how to read and write. And so, if you would, it would be a big help to those children and our city if you would try to volunteer and sort of watch them a little bit, and anytime they need help with homework, spend about thirty-five, forty minutes or hours to try to help them out a couple days a week, because that would be really good. If they get to the seventh or eighth grade, and especially if they can't read, they start getting bored, they get in trouble. By the ninth grade, they get embarrassed, and they usually get in really bad trouble, and they quit school or get kicked out or whatever. So they've gotta learn to read and do the math before they get to high school or even middle school. So if you can do that, have a chance to volunteer for just a little bit of your time, it'd be really good, and I think it'd make you feel good, too. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Tolls?
I'm very glad that the youth are here today, and I'd just like to say to them, with choices come consequences. So if you make good choices, then you'll have good consequences that'll come. Education, I'm a prime example of, education will take you all around the world, but you have to stay focused, and you have to make sure that you know what you want to do. Also, on next Monday, we'll have a District One meeting at the Antioch Family Life Center. And as far as the proclamation today, I understand about there are not enough organ donors. I have a brother who had a bilateral lung transplant. Had he not had that, he would not be alive today. So it's very important that we, who can be organ donors. And also, I would just like to say about notification. I know that maybe the city, there's a responsibility, I believe, on both parts, and now I'm sort of speaking toward the East Gaston area in that when there are projects and things that are going on, it would be very helpful if the people in that area or in all of the city of Gaston know when there's projects that are going to be done, so they can be notified as to, you know, what to do, what's happening and what's going on. I'm just talking about different projects. If there's gonna be a disruption in their day, in their business, then they need to know what's going on. And my example is, you know, we need the work done in the East Gaston area for Alabama Gas as far as the construction is going on. But to the constituents over there, I can't give you any free ties, I can't give you any realignment. So we're just going to consistently stay, and the city engineers know, I'm always asking them every day, when is it gonna be done? When is it gonna be finished? But anyway, I know that it's gonna be finished, and know that little patching that they're doing over there now, that's not the end. I asked that this morning. So I just encourage the city, if we can, notify people when there are things that's gonna be done. Alabama Gas Company said they did, but a lot of businesses said they didn't get notifications. So I'm just encouraging us as, as a council, as the city employees and the mayor, if we can, just stay on top of it. Thank you.
Okay.
I guess y'all have noticed that we have three new members on the council. How many of you knew that before you came up here? Well, how many of you are old enough to vote? Then you ought to know. It's important that you do know who you're voting for. And to vote, that's the main thing. We've had such bad turnouts as far as voters going to the polls, and we do need you to go and vote, please.
Thank you, Ms. Eccles. Councilman Worthy?
I'd just like to say thanks to all of the young people that came out today, and I want to give kudos to your teacher back there, to your educator, Mrs. Hardrick. Thank you for doing what you do. And when I substituted out there at Gaston City as the School Resource Officer, I would go sit in on a class, and she would have a lively class, lively debate, when she teaches history and government. So it was a good class to go to. So I just want to tell her thank you, and thank you to the kids, and remember, education is the key. I know we preach it to the choir, because all of you are about to graduate and go on to college, but inform you and encourage your peers to stay in school. Like I said, we're trying to get mining, factory, and companies to come here to the city. They look at the dropout rate, the crime rate, they look at all of that. So just thank you all for what you do and continue with your education. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Billingsley?
Over the weekend, we had Old School, and I don't know if any of you all attended it, but I got to see some of the people that graduated and went to school with me, and we had a real good time. There were not any problems. Sometimes we worry about things happening, but you can only control what you do. And sometimes other people do things that you don't want them to do, but you can't control that. So I would hope that, it's been seven years since this has been going on, people from as far away as Ohio and California have come to this. So it brings a lot of money into this town for that weekend. So I would hope that we could be able to keep this event going without too much trouble. And also, A&amp;M has an alumni meeting, the second Tuesday of each month, so your teacher needs to come to that, because she's a graduate of A&amp;M. Thank you.
Councilman Billingsley, who was it that actually won the event this year?
Some team from somewhere.
In a sandstorm, I believe.
That would be Etowah High School for the second year in a row, thank you. Councilman Cannon?
Thank you. I just want to commend the students, how good they've been today, how good they've listened. I'm gonna ask them a question. I know everyone of them's gonna raise their hand on this question. How many people in the audience knows where the Alabama City gazebo is? Alabama City gazebo is on Wall Street. This Saturday, from two o'clock to ten o'clock, we're gonna have a free concert, music. Curly's gonna cook hot dogs, there'll be a bottle of water. Come out and enjoy that free concert. It's every fourth Saturday of the month. And tell all your friends at school to come out and have a good time. It's music for everybody. That's all I got.
Okay.
I did, Alabama City on Wall Street.
Alabama City's a big place.
Go down Megan Boulevard, you go down Megan Boulevard to Twenty-seventh Street, look right there on the corner, you'll see Rip Regan Park. How many people know where Rip Regan Park is? Okay, now we're getting someone. When I see y'all again, everyone, I'm gonna ask y'all if y'all came to the gazebo. So all right, I'll see y'all there Saturday.
Councilman Reed?
Yeah, Bob, they might not know who was elected on this board, but I got a feeling after they leave here today, they're gonna know, they're gonna delve into things a whole lot better. But I gotta say one thing, this is probably the best-looking and the best dressed group we've ever had up here. I haven't seen any baggy pants on the ground yet, and I hope I don't ever. Hope I don't ever. I'm seriously heart attack, you are a great looking group, and it's just phenomenal to me to see a young group that acts the way you do and presents yourself in the manner that you do. On another subject, last week, I had asked the chief and Shane to look into security up at the Falls, primarily about the deer, the second time around, that the dog was chased down, and I'm sure the loud noise, and should've been looked after a lot quicker. So I'd asked them to look into security up there and what we might do to better that. Shane, did y'all come up with anything?
Sure. Just briefly, the chief did look into things there. There are varying, varying reports, but bottom line is that we do have private security at North Lula Falls Park, as we do at many of our... at North Lula Falls Park, as we do at many of our facilities, and one of the issues that is recurring is making sure that the, the employee, the guard makes his rounds. Prior to this, we had already started looking at, at reinstalling a, a modern form of the time clock, so that, that when the guard makes their rounds, we actually know that they, where they were and when they were there. So, that was already kind of in the works when this event happens, but that just highlights the necessity to go ahead, to go ahead and do that. As far as the actual security of the, of the deer pen, we spent quite a good bit of money on new fencing and concreting the, the footing of the fence, so that there, there was no access for the, for, for dogs, because this is a repeat, a recurring event, and we have not found a, a place in the fence where the, the animals could breach, could breach it. So, we will keep looking. We think we have an idea how they, the, the dogs got in the pen, but it is an unfortunate incident, and hopefully, one that we can keep from occurring again.
Well, I'm glad to see we're looking into it, because for a pretty good while now, I've been questioned at the park about the security, whether they were making the rounds or not, things that went on out on the ball field that we had to have private citizens report, and then I called down, and they go up and run the people out, and so on and so forth. I just felt like that if we look into it deeper and look at better ways to get the security done up there and make those rounds, we'd be a whole lot better off. I appreciate it, Shane. I really do. You're the chief, though.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Councilman Reed. Just to echo some of the sentiment, just good to see the young people here today. Always, again, this is probably one of the highlights of the year for us, is having all the students to come up today, so, and y'all are a good-looking bunch. Y'all are a good-looking bunch, for sure. And I hope that you'll continue to enjoy the balance of the day. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just quickly, in conjunction with Councilman Toles' request, to the, to let everybody know, the work on Forest Avenue is ongoing as far as the city project, and the work on Paserit should begin immediately thereafter, just to let everyone know, of course, we'll give everybody the date thereafter. Working out some things on Ninth Street, too, but hopefully, these are pretty, pretty quick projects, being research projects, a little bit of ramp work as well, so there will be disruptions, but hopefully, we keep that limited. If y'all have questions, just let us know if you have any issues.
Good. Thank you for that update. Sure. But again, we definitely appreciate the young folks being here. To, to the point that Mr. Echols made earlier, I, you know, I, I often like to repeat this story, but it, I think it bears repeating. I was at an event within the community, and there was a, a gentleman who stood up almost proudly and said in the scope of that meeting that I don't vote, because I've lost confidence in, in government. And, you know, and I knew the gentleman, and I looked at him, and I said, sir, you know, you're a much, much better person than that. We need people like you registered to vote, because we need you participating in the process. We need you on our juries. You know, he was a, he was a black male, middle-aged black male, and, you know, I had a judge tell me once, when I thought I was too busy to serve on a jury, said, we need you here, 'cause my docket is full of people that look like you. So, so it's important. It's important that you register to vote, not just so that you can decide who gets to sit up here, but also so you can participate in the judicial process as a juror, because if you're not a registered voter, you don't get to be a juror. So, you don't get to impact that process. So, please keep that in mind and bear that in mind going forward, as you start to exercise that right that so many people fought and died for. And, and also, to the point that Council, Councilwoman Toles mentioned, you know, education is, is very, very important. You have, again, I'll say this publicly, Ms. Katie's probably one of the best teachers that we've got at Gaston City. She does a wonderful job. She, she probably doesn't like for me to embarrass her like that, but I think she's a, she's a very good teacher. And, and so, you guys should milk all that you can from her. I know her classes are enjoyable, but you should milk all that you can from her class and from the experience, 'cause it's gonna make you a better person going forward. Couple, couple things before we wrap up. Mayor, on next week, if we could, if we could talk something about the, the youth jobs programs that we've had in place for the last three or four years. We're getting, we're getting close, and it'll be summer...
Yeah, we're gonna continue for sure. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Good, good. It's a good, good program. It's something we've done for a while, and anybody that's interested in participating with it, in, in that program, needs to pay, pay close attention on next week, and then, of course, put in application on the second floor of City Hall. The last thing is an announcement. The city of Gaston is participating in the Great American Cleanup this week. It's from April twentieth, which was yesterday, through the twenty-fourth. Volunteers are needed, and all neighborhood watch groups and communities are encouraged to participate in this week-long event. Bags will be furnished, and volunteers will receive a free pass for mini golf. Participants, participants will meet in the City Hall parking lot at Ninety Broad Street, so they'll meet here, and the volunteer hours are from eight AM to noon. To volunteer your group or to volunteer as an individual, you'll need to contact two five six five four nine four seven nine four. Okay? If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.